Well, it is after six o'clock and good evening. One light crowd at this point. And I'd like to welcome everybody who's here for the Monday, December 5th, 2022 meeting of the Town of Ryenbeck Planning Board. Delise has indicated that she will not be able to be here this evening, but otherwise we have a forum and we will proceed. The posted agenda will stand, I believe, with no changes. You've all received Jim's meeting notes. Sam, could you have a chance to look at them?
I propose we accept them.
Thank you. Motion from Edna Seckert, please.
Second, Sean.
Thanks, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, extensions. Have you all had a chance to look at the November 21st meeting minutes?
Yes. I propose we accept those also.
Thank you, Edna. Second?
Second.
Okay, second. Michael, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, extensions, hearing none of the motion carries. Correspondence and announcements. I do not have anything. Anyone else? Any announcements, anything to share? Okay. I will announce that I don't know how many people are here this evening for the Rockledge public hearing, but I will let you know that they will be asking for continuation based on the fact that our consulting engineer for the town has not reviewed all the materials that have been submitted as of this date. So there's really no point in Rockledge coming in and presenting because there's no new information to respond to. So if any of you are here for that, you're welcome to stay, but if that's the reason you're here and you choose to leave, we understand. We have to wait until 6:15 to start the public hearings, but we do have a couple of things later in the agenda that I think we can move to the top of the agenda. And why don't we start, Jim, with the zoning referrals, zoning administrators referral for North Side Auto Body sign for it?
So we, we, it was last meeting we talked about the zoning administrator referral for North Side Auto Body for their sign application. It's on the screen. The application that came in previously did not have any dimensions on it. It didn't give us a lot of the details about what the sign material would be or anything like that. We did get in a new set of papers and it did give us the dimensions. They've also talked about the materials that they're going to be using, both of which, well, the materials will meet the code. In talking with Michael, the City Acting ZA, we realized that the signs is proposed to be too big. The total square footage of the sign is too big. The sign, the size of the post sign, not the sign, not my sign, the post sign outside the road is too big. And then it was also, like, it was today too tall and not far enough back from the road.
Yeah, I spoke with them. I spoke with them today and they're withdrawing the application to replace the pre-standing sign. The other one meets the requirements in terms of size and everything, all that sort of thing. It's done, it's done. This one is too big. It's basically directly replacing it to a right-hand, but it's still too big, too close to the road and counter, and too tall apparently. So they would need four variances to just put their sign in that existing sign area and they have decided to withdraw that. So they're just applying for the one on the building, which actually doesn't code in terms of size.
And taking this one down?
Eventually. They're going to have some consideration, but they have a temporary signing permit for it, for the cover of it. And they're going to discuss it with the owner of the property. Either they're going to go forward for the four variances or they're going to have to take a time.
So it sounds like, Michael, then we probably need to get a new written application from them to go through or do it under the planning board comment? Or do you think we just move forward?
I think it's basically, you have everything now that they're going to give us. We do have to give the dimensions and months. So we know the dimensions are legal. The material made up is legal. It's downlit and not active or anything like that. So the one on the building is actually needs code.
It's just, so it's just the sign they will need to report?
This is the only one?
This is the only one. And so we can make a, so there's no zoning referral. We can, what? Who brings this passage?
The zoning referral, if the planning board looks at it and the lease code and they feel it's okay, they tell me that and I should bring it.
Okay. How, is there any timeframe within which they have to deal with the other sign? I mean, can they, you say they can stay there until they talk?
Basically, what they could do is they could apply for a non-signing permit. It'll give me five years before we decide to do it. They could do that if they want to. Basically, I'm going to probably give them a call next week if they will be decided to do it. And frankly, the same thing with the del. We have the same problems with the del. So it's just a direct replacement. But that's obviously closer than 23 feet of the road. It's outlandish and 6 feet. So I think the genius is who wrote this into the zoning law. I thought this is a good idea. He never thought about how you would apply, how you would administer, how you would enforce it. Doesn't surprise me in the least. But I'm going to give them a little time to think about this.
The sign room is pretty strict when it comes to planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, my concern is that they not, I mean, that they make a decision as to which ground they want to take and pursue it rather than just do not.
And the law's again, when you think about it, you know, standing rooms, for example. That sign could have been changed back in 2014. Five years for it to stay up. There's some things that just don't make a lot of sense. The way they built that part of the law, once again, they pretty much made everyone sign out there illegally. And they just, they didn't think about enforcement. They figured this is a good idea and someone else will have to deal with it.
Okay, so we probably want something in writing from them signing a building for it.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then how does everybody feel about moving ahead regarding the other side?
The one on the building?
Does it require a variance or not?
It does not.
It does not?
The one on the building is fully needed. It needs the current zoning.
So we're just advising Michael this evening?
Right, as long as they just do that sign. If they do that.
And the other one. Then we have an issue with two signs. Don't we code the tolls?
No, this is the only one they're doing.
Right, so they're just doing this.
Well, if they were to head and this is approved, then they've got to fix the square feet that they're working off of for the other one.
Exactly. That's why they're probably not going to do the other one. They would be, I think, six square feet. They figured a long loop and now you're 45 miles an hour. That's going to see it anyway. They're half the size of what it is now.
It's about anything that has to be repaired.
They'd be four variances to replace it as it currently exists from a spacious sand floor.
Okay.
And then request more to make the sign, replace the sign.
Okay. How's everybody feel about one? Well, the advice we have to give, one, that's just that you're okay with this. The back sign.
The building sign.
The building sign, yeah.
Oh, it's code, right?
It is the code, yes.
Very orange.
That's a little low, Ross.
All right. But the one that they have by the road right now is an exact replacement of what had been there.
Yeah.
But there's a, there's a lighting component to it.
That's a temporary sign at this point. And they're going to have to either remove it or they're going to have to, they're going to decode or they're going to go to ZBA for the variances in order to keep it to the dimensions that currently is, but right-hand side.
But if this sign on the building were smaller, they would get more capacity at the road.
That's for that, but it would still be taller than 6 feet and would still be closer to the road than 20 feet. So it's still the variance.
Still would be variance.
Replacing the sign as is, still with our variances.
If I were on the ZBA, I might want to be looking at both of these at the same time.
Well, the ZBA can certainly do that. But the sign on the building meets code and that's all they're applying for there. So they don't need any variances.
I don't know that we have a lot to say about it. If it meets code.
Similar to the one that's there. It matches their logo out of their location.
Yeah, except that it's a North Side Auto Body instead of right-hand.
Well, I think what we've just been engaging in here is like, is information to pass on to the zoning owners rather than pass on to them. About, these are the ramifications of going in the direction you're going. And this, yeah. Are you okay with that?
Fine, fine, absolutely. I have a very good relationship with it.
I wasn't asking about that. Well, we'll be back tomorrow.
But it is true that the size of the sign on the building could reasonably influence the ZBA's view about how large the sign along the road should be.
It could. The one on the building.
And I think that they're taking their chances right now by going in the direction they're going and knowing that they have to make decisions based on accepting this.
The one on the building could actually be larger than it is now and still meet code.
Right, it's the total.
Yes.
Area. And so if they're going to do something and spend money, there is perhaps a certain con of risk.
Oh, yeah.
Before they go to the ZBA, that would be something that would be expressed.
Well, we're counting on you to tell them all that.
Aye.
Okay, everybody good with that? All right, Jim, then I think you'll do also the time extension request from Grant's Meere House.
Sure.
And maybe you want to walk us through that and then we'll get back to the regular order of business.
So Grant's Meere House was a project approved earlier this year.
June?
June, June.
It was June?
It applies earlier this year. The applicant has requested an extension for their site plan approval and their special use permit. And they've also requested an extension for their wetlands permit. So what you're being asked to do today, I don't see any issues with the extension. It's a smart paperwork issue. And I think they are looking for the site plan to be extended six months, which will extend their date for satisfaction from December 20th, 2022, to June 30th, I'm sorry, to June 20th, 2023. So six months on the site plan. And they're looking for an extension for the special use permit to the maximum period permitted, which is two years total, which would bring their extension to June 20th, 2024. So the third request that they've had was to, and this was in their words, to confirm the date of the expiration of the wetlands permit. They've stated it's a three-year period starting from the date of filing of the plat, which is August 9th, 2022. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that I believe there are actually two potential options for how long this extension can go. The way the code is written, there's a three-year period for wetlands that's tied to the filing of a plat conjunction with a subdivision application. But there's also in zoning code, a two-year period for wetlands permit when it's issued in conjunction with a building permit application, site plan, or special use permit. They did all of those. So I just wanted to bring it to the planning board's attention and I guess for your kind of decision as to where you think that they should go with the extension if it was two or three years. I don't see any issues with the extensions. I wanted to clarify specifically which ones you wanted to do for violence or for damage issue.
The meaning of the extension is that they must begin work by that time or end all work by that time? What does that mean of the deadline?
It's extending the date of approval to come in September.
Well, to come in.
They would have to, you know, pull a building permit on those approvals. What they have done is they have quite a demolition permit under the, their existing approvals, which allows work on the manor house, begin the work on the manor house.
And those were approvals for years ago?
That's the only approval. It's not the approval that we're discussing tonight.
Right. But it would seem to me that the approval of the site plan, that, you know, the site plan, I would like to see it run with the site plan and extend it to two years as opposed to three separate. I mean, I'd like to say make them stay together.
Well, the special use, I'm sorry, the site plan, I think the extension is for a short amount of time in the special use plan, isn't it?
Site plan is six months from, right? Which will get them to June of next year. The special use permit, they're asking for the maximum period, which gets them to June of 2024. But they're asking for what the timeline of the wetlands permit is. And Nick had stated it was three years, but in the code, there's actually two options. There's a, there's a three-year option tied to a subdivision, but there's two years if it's a site plan or special use permit. So if they just commit for the subdivision, it'd be three. If they just commit for a site plan or special use permit, it'd be two. They did them all. So I'm just asking the planning board to decide how you want to deal with that extension since it's, you know, they could be to go either way.
But if they don't, if they don't need the extension for special use permit, it's a moving point, isn't it?
Well, they do need, well, they do need a special, well, hard to say. The wetland permit is different than the special use permit.
Right.
And I'm assuming the special use permit is primarily to deal with this SCS, the sewage situation. And perhaps some of the areas where they're ininging on some of the upper areas for some of the other side development.
The thing about it is, if you go three years on the wetlands permit, it actually goes out past when they have to come back in for the site plan, for the special use permit review by the landowner again.
That's, that's very true.
So it makes more sense to me to go to the two years than to the three?
It certainly won't hurt them.
Well, it won't hurt them, but they have to be back anyway, but.
What's the limits on that, actually? I guess, there's a. Well, they have to come, I think at that point they have to come back before the planning board has agreed to approve the applications.
If they're going to go to site plan and special use permit, there's a limit on the extension you can get.
We have asked for and have scheduled a pre-conference meeting tomorrow with Nick and the team to get an update on where they are with the outstanding approvals. And I think I asked them to provide us with a written update, which will ensure that everybody still all have a better understanding of where they are, D E C and D O T. Those are the whole of us. That's, I mean, I haven't signed anything with that. So I guess then you want to propose a resolution here?
Sure. It sounds like we're going with two years for wetlands. So in consideration of the written request, the time they made, the town of Ryenbeck Planning Board hereby grants an extension for the satisfaction conditions and requirements set forth from the planning board's approval of the Grant's Meere House dated June 20th, 2022 as follows. Extending the end date for satisfaction of the site plan approval six months from December 20th, 2022 to June 20th, 2023. Extending the end date for satisfaction of the special use permit to the maximum period of two years, which will get us to June 20th, 2024. And confirming that the expiration of the wetlands permit will be for two years in conjunction with the site plan and special use permit approval that were granted. And I will check the date on that.
So I move that we approve that.
Okay, second, please.
Second.
Is that correct?
Yes.
We don't need to pull the board on this. It's just a script vote. So all is in favor?
Aye.
Post, extension. Now I could go now back to the regular order of business. Assistant folks have come in. I just want, I announced earlier that Rockledge has asked for a continuation of the public hearing. Mark, I don't believe you're presenting tonight.
I don't.
Okay. So those of you, if you come only for that, let's just share the information for.
So will you take public comments?
We will. It's a public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our first public hearing is Jacob Reeves, 19 Duchess Terrace. Site plan and special use permit.
Good evening. I'm not going to say anything everybody else wants to hear.
There are some changes, right? In the architecture?
Yeah.
There's one point goes on.
The upstairs windows.
Yeah, they changed on the floor plan and on the windows before to non-compliant windows for depression.
We just hope he has support.
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay, folks?
Sounds good.
This is addressed in terms that we're raised?
Yes. We also did receive a letter from Dave Pearson, the acceptance letter for the acceptance.
Forty-one years.
Yes.
Mike, we can't hear you.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Michael was saying we received the letter from Dave Pearson, the acceptance letter.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
And that's on file. Questions, comments from members of the planning board? Any other standing concerns? Hearing none. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to comment? Okay, Jim? Oh, yeah. That motion to close the public hearing?
So will.
Second?
Second.
Almost in favor?
Aye.
Post, extensions. Now we'll go into the draft approval resolution. Thanks, Michael.
So for your consideration tonight, draft approval resolution from Jacob Reeves for construction of new house in 19 Duchess Terrace in the Rynnehamlet. Reaffirming the actions type 2 under secret for which four-day environmental quality review is concluded based on submitted information finding that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125 with the application for special use permits in construction of the house finding the work intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits and asking the board to grant or request a special use permit conditioned upon site plan approval. Regarding site plan approval, finding the work intended use to be consistent with the application inclusive of the materials and site plan, I think I have to update that date. I think that's the old date. Obviously, it takes, I'll update that date. It's submitted last week. And authorizing the planning board chair to snap inside the above-side site plan upon the effort and satisfaction of the three conditions listed there.
Okay. Then the motion.
So will.
Michael, second, please.
Second, Sean.
All right. I will overboard. Michael?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And Michael, aye. Good luck. I know it's been a long time and a difficult situation, so I wish you the best, so far. Next, Bob. The application of David Alexanian, 110 Old Albany Post Road for minor subdivision. I accept, Jim.
Good evening. Seth Stipple with Mark from the C P E L S P C. Here to see Representative David Alexanian and his application for a four lot minor conservation subdivision located at 110 Old Albany Post Road in the town of Ryenbeck. Parcel is approximately 49 acres. It is in the rural countryside RC 5 district. That slide, please, sir. So here tonight for a couple of things. At our last meeting, we had asked for a continuation of the public hearing so we could work with the applicant who was working with the conservation group to see if they might be able to adjust your driveways. That is no longer the intent. What you have and has been submitted is what we will be moving forward. So we just wanted to clarify that. And then we were also asked to go ahead and take a look at the four-step process and kind of walk through in the public hearing setting to them. So I went ahead and just kind of prepared a brief presentation just so that we could address that. So just to start off, you know, one of the things is, you know, just looking at the bulk, at the bulk area regulations. If we zoom in to the next slide, please, Jim?
I'm so sorry.
No worries. Yeah, I did for you. One of the interesting things about this is that, you know, in the town of Ryenbeck's code, you know, the preferred method of subdivision is a conservation subdivision. So that is permitted use in the RC 5 district, whereas conventional subdivision actually requires additional permitting, special use. So, you know, we're going ahead with the permitted use and it does require us working with the planning board. We have met with the planning board in previous pre-application meetings as well as an informal kind of introductory meeting with the full board. And then now we've moved into the full application. So I'm just going to go ahead and work forward from here. But I wanted to provide a little bit of background information that we had kind of, which helped inform how we went about subdivision. Next slide, please. So we wanted to take a look at a couple of historic areas. So maybe you can zoom in just a little bit, Jim. This is 1930. So what's interesting about this is, this is actually Route 9 now. This is Old Albany Post Road. So in 1930, Old Albany Post Road was Route 9. As a result, most, you can see almost all the way back in this lot, was either farm fields or pasture land. There's an existing driveway that actually came up. And then there's an alley that goes straight down the center of the property as well as continues around to the south portion. So I think it's just important to identify that, you know, as sort of mentioned previously, that this is old pasture land, farmland that has regrown in and they do have some existing roadways and it has through here. There are stone walls. You can almost make out the stone walls as they move through the property. So if we could just go to the next slide, Jim? So jumping from 1930 to 1970, there was a development on parcel in between that time. You can see Route 9 is now established. Old Albany Post Road is now a town road. And at this point in 1970 is when the construction of the existing residence was done. So you have the driveway which leads up to the house site and the home is actually right here. So as of 1970, we developed this as a single-family residential. And what's interesting is that you can see how all of the road that started to come back in all of those pasture lands. So that gives us our early, mid-seasonal kind of cover type. One thing to note is, I don't know if you saw in the 1930s, most of this area in the back to the east was actually untouched. It was some more established forests. So just using this information is what helped us inform as we moved through the four-step process. Next slide, please, Jim? So this is as it currently exists today. See the home clearly. There is a driveway which leads up from Old Albany Post Road. Driveway is approximately 1,200 feet in its existing length. You have the home here. There's a loud building. Septic is here. Row is here. The majority of this site has grown in at this point. So we can go to the next slide, please, Jim? So just looking at our existing conditions plan, what we first wanted to do is obviously we wanted to identify the site features. You know, we do that through kind of a boundary survey as well as wetland delineation. And then we also look at other elements of the site. You know, what has held here is just noting the driveway, its current length. You know, that there are some farm roads. You know, we don't show that farm road that goes in this direction, but as you saw from the 1930s photo, it actually came along this rid line a little bit and then went down in this direction. There's also, like I said, many stone walls. We haven't fully surveyed the stone walls, but they are present on the property. And so that just helps to find the existing conditions. One of the things about this site, 49 acres, conditions. One of the things about this site, forty-nine acres, we only have, uh, three hundred and twenty linear feet of frontage along, along the parcel. Um, the requirement in the RC five zoning district is two hundred and forty feet. So that's a very limited factor when you start to look at this site and we look at development. So when our client approached us about, uh, developing the site, what we wanted to do is first identify sort of like a net density and what might be possible here. And that was the first thing we noticed. We're going to have to come up with a way to increase our net density because the lot frontage is not, um, adequate. Um, so you can go to the next slide, please, Jim? So when we do that, we do the yield subdivision, net density plan. Um, and the way that we did that is in, when you look through the code sections, the section on, uh, conservation subdivision is twenty-five pages. Um, so, you know, there's quite a bit of information in there, but one of the things they talk about is that developing your yield subdivision plan now needs to be formed in some basis of truth and possibility. So the first thing that we looked at is knowing that we needed additional frontage. We noted that the area at the lower portion of the driveway flattens out quite a bit. So it did allow us to be able to go ahead and develop a cul-de-sac. It is not our intention anyway to develop a cul-de-sac for this subdivision, but it, what that does is it increases our frontage. So in, in increasing our frontage, we are then, uh, able to create one existing lot, which would be with the existing residence and this upper portion, a second lot, um, and then also a third lot. Um, I, I want to just note that, you know, we looked at the areas both here and to the north, um, when we were originally working with David, um, the subdivision, because they're beautiful pieces of the property and it would make sense if we could get back there to possibly utilize that. But when we start to look at it further, um, we definitely know that there are some constraints on the site that we wanted to, to go ahead. But this cul-de-sac plan allows our net density. Um, all of the lots have more than two hundred and forty, uh, linear feet, which is the requirement. They have the required lot width. So these are all conforming lots. So our net density plan is now three lots. So we have the maximum of three lots potential. And now what we want to do is go ahead and look at how to apply that to a conservation subdivision. Next slide, please, Jim? So we've been into the four step process. I cut it down just a little bit for the sake of this discussion, but the first step is the delineation of open space lands. Uh, one of the first things we want to note, it, the delineation of open space lands is not only things like slopes and wetlands and wetland buffers, but also archaeology. So one of the first things that was pointed out by this board is that surrounding our site, we do have historic and archaeological, uh, you know, resources. So as a result, we went ahead and did the next slide, please, Jim? Uh, phase one, I mean, phase one B. Um, and we can go to next slide. Um, that, uh, study did, uh, um, a publication and kind of, uh, literature review as well as site, uh, shovel testing. And they look at our area potential effect. Now we have the existing driveway that we proposed to use as a common driveway and the existing house and the only other place is a driveway that would lead to this house site and then the dry, short driveway that would lead to this house site. So this is our area of potential effect that was studied by the archaeologists. So next slide, um, so in the conclusions of the archaeology report, just note that they, they conducted shovel tests and, you know, based on both undertaking where we are proposing development for the two new home sites, there's no potential effect to significant startup. So that eliminates kind of one aspect of, uh, you know, um, the, uh, just plan and planning how to, how to go through this. Um, next slide, please, Jim? So now we get into some fun, busy map. Um, this is, uh, environmental constraints. So maybe we could just zoom into the table on the left quickly? So what we took a look at is, um, the code identifies both primary and, uh, secondary conservation areas. So the primary conservation areas are mostly wetlands and slopes over twenty-five percent. You get into secondary conservation areas, which are roads, trails, structures, including stone walls and other, uh, items like that. Slopes between fifteen and twenty-five percent as well as any natural or cultural resources. Um, so when you just start to break the site apart, now we can zoom out a little bit, Jim, that'd be great. Um, we've identified wetland areas. Those wetland areas have, uh, they're all army corps interior weapons. Um, so they do not have a buffer requirement through army corps, but obviously the town's wetland lordens, um, has a hundred foot adjacent area. So the wetland boundary is actually here and what you see is the hundred foot adjacent area. So there are, uh, several pockets of wetlands. What we can immediately see when we start to look at this map is that there are also some steep slopes on the site and it makes a lot of sense. You rise up, uh, you know, a good distance, uh, a hundred feet or more to get from Old Albany Post Road up. No intended development on this portion of the site. What is kind of evident here is through this area is a ridge line and that ridge line separates the runoff that goes to the west from the runoff that goes to the east into any of these wetland resource areas. So, um, when we started to look at this, these are, it's hard to see in the shading, but there is a difference between what is a fifteen percent and what is a twenty-five percent slope shown here. So these are, are both fifteen and twenty-five percent slopes, greater than twenty-five percent slopes, shown together. And you start to see the areas where development is possible. And so, uh, a key component of this is that we need to work with a, um, non-for-profit conservation organization to hold these and, and so we started that work early and some of their comments helped inform us. What we noticed immediately is that there's quite a bit of resources in the eastern portion of the site. So it made a lot of sense for us to start to look at development to the west. And, uh, in doing that, we wanted to look for house sites. Now, remember I had talked about this was, road was existing and then there was an existing kind of farm road that also went through here that we saw in the nineteen thirties now. That road is well established and actually exists and travels like straight through this area here. Um, and so in knowing that, we started to look at development on this western portion of the property. Um, one of the things about development anywhere in this area is that, uh, we need to provide, you know, sanitary and wastewater, um, I'm sorry, wells and sanitary. So even on larger parcels of land, that can sometimes become difficult and this is no exception. You know, there are shallow soils, um, and, you know, some, uh, rock. So we needed to be able to look at, you know, where is it possible to develop sanitary disposal systems? We also have some residences, uh, existing homes that are just west and downgrading of us. So we had to take into consideration their wells and their set system. Um, and when we do that, uh, if we can go to the next action. I've lumped house site, which is step two, driveway and road alignments, which is step three, and lot lines, which is step four into, into one map. Um, I've given some context of what kind of drove us to that situation, which helps inform how we went through those steps, but if we could just go to the next slide, we'll just take a look at, you know, what we're proposing. Um, so the, what we're proposing are, uh, three lots. Um, the development is, is mainly, uh, we're going to use the wetland boundary on the east side that will become sort of the lot lines. Um, we're asking for a slight reduction in a hundred foot adjacent area to fifty feet, which is in keeping with the building envelope. The requirement for, uh, rear and side yard setbacks is fifty feet. Um, so it would allow for a little bit more of a development area. We initially started to look at trying to mass two homes in this area. What we found out is that there's not a lot of area for sanitary disposal. Sanitary disposal for this lot is only here. And to be able to accommodate two set system in this area with well separations, these are two hundred foot, uh, well separations for the adjoining parcels. So you can see how that constricts the amount of available land to be developed in this area. In doing that, we started working with the conservation organization and our client to identify, okay, well, maybe we could use a small, a little bit more of the, uh, portion of the site to the south, which is why we decided to kind of come around the south portion and develop this lot in, in fact. The requirement in the RC five district for conservation is sixty-five percent of the lot area. So forty-nine acre site, it's about thirty-seven acre, uh, about thirty-two acres. So we're proposing more than thirty-two acres of conservation. So we were able to accommodate three plus or minus five acre lots with the required conservation area and to keep it continuous and, uh, with undisturbed, um, all along this western area utilizing the existing roadways. It's proposed that there be an easement so that driveway access for lot one will be provided off the common driveway, for lot two will be provided off the common driveway and for lot three as well. There'll also be an extension of the easement so that access to the conservation easement is possible utilizing this existing driveway. Um, so that's what had, had brought us to develop this map and kind of inform, uh, this map. We have walked through portions of this with, uh, the board along the way. Um, and you guys have provided input which have also helped this, but, um, I think it was necessary to do this in a public format, um, to be able to just provide all of the detail. Um, so I don't know if anybody has any comments or, you know, suggestions about the way that we might have done it or has any input on that, but obviously would be interested in hearing that. And then I just have a couple of, uh, other items just to note, um, for the board.
Alright, let's go with Jim. Do you have any comments?
I don't really have any, any new comments. I thought that tonight, um, one thing we should definitely do, um, is discuss the four steps. And I think the planning board should do on the record is whether or not they agree the four steps have been made and then you can decide if you want to go further, but obviously with the review and approval process. But I think before we get to any discussion of, um, you know, the secret and, um, approval resolution, we should just discuss the four steps. Except just walk through, uh, just kind of check them off, uh, one and nine. Other than that, I don't have any new comments.
And you have detailed them on page five of your planning, right?
Correct.
So you, what, how do you want to proceed folks? Do you want to address step one and, uh, agree that you believe that the delineation of the, of the, of the, uh? Right, the delineation of the, of the, of the, of the. Do you folks want to go through one by one or do you have a general comment about what's been presented?
Well, I'm looking at this four step process. It appears to me that all of these steps have been taken, clearly taken in an adequate way.
I would agree. Does anyone find anything lacking in the presentation this evening that does not address the four steps required?
Wouldn't it be wise to simply stay with those four steps or since it's a public form?
No, I, I think certainly Seth in his slide showed them, but for purposes of the public record, step one is the delineation of open spacelands. Step two is the location of house sites. Step three is the alignment of streets and trails and step four is to draw in the lot lines. I, I do not find the presentation or the plans before is lacking in any of those areas.
And I would also add that since I had the opportunity to spend a great deal of time out there with Seth going over this, I would have to agree that this particular way of doing the subdivision preserves to the greatest extent I think possible a continuous, very, very wetland and upland habitat area without segmentation, without breaking it up for elimination. So I, quite honestly, having been there, I don't know how else they could have done this and come out with this good, uh, conservation area. I'm sure they will not have any trouble getting any conservation easement.
Seth, you working with a conservation organization?
Uh, yes. I just wanted to provide a, a couple extra, um, notes. Um, so, and that is one of them. So, uh, we, we have engaged with a non-for-profit conservation organization. Fully disclose that that is, you know, Winnieke Land Trust. Um, in recent days, there has been, uh, some change in personnel at Winnieke. Um, so we are working through that with them. We have a draft MOU. I spoke with the executive director, uh, as early as today. He said that our draft MOU and our plans shouldn't be impacted in any way by the change in the personnel at Winnieke, but obviously, um, one of the, um, notes in the planner's notes was that, um, as a condition of approval before the chair signs the plans that we haven't executed that MOU. So I don't see that is in, um, jeopardy in any way. Um, and I think that we should, will be moving forward with that. The, uh, other things just wanted to note, um, you know, we, uh, have had initial conversations a while back with the highway department. Um, another, um, you know, um, item in the planner's notes was that, um, they'd like, you guys would like to see maybe a letter and email confirming that there is no issues with the utilization of individual driveway converting that into the, uh, common driveway. Um, so we are, um, uh, going to be doing that. Unfortunately, um, the highway department, um, you know, had some personal issues over the last few days. We haven't been able to make that happen. Um, the other part of this, um, you know, we're not, uh, seeking health department approval for this plan. Um, because the lots are greater than five acres, um, we're looking to do a non-realty subdivision. So, um, at this time, we're not, you know, we will not need health department approval to get through the subdivision process with this lot. Um, so, uh, those I guess are just the items that I wanted to bring up. Um, we also did, you know, receive some comments at the last public hearing regarding some drainage issues along the roadway. Um, we've been out to take a look at those and investigate those. Um, when we take a look at, um, you know, the detailed topography, um, uh, we do know that, um, you know, we, we could explain, you know, what's going on out there, but we'd like to just leave the highway department out there before we provide any information to, um, the neighbor who had brought that up or, you know, this board as well. Um, so we can have those items that are, for lack of a better term, outstanding. Um, I don't want that to, um, deter this board from maybe moving forward with conditional approval, but, um, you know, I understand however it might, you know, need to happen, so.
Anyone else who can?
So these, the other two lots, are they currently, uh, are they going to be sold? Do you know if they're going to be sold or is it future?
Um, the intention of the applicant, um, uh, he has a, um, a family, um, a, a wife and a daughter, I believe it might be an ex-wife and a daughter, um, who may be residing in the existing home. Um, and he'd like to, uh, build a home on the same site for himself potentially. And then he was looking for some added, um, uh, you know, income from the parcel and asked us to explore either three or four lots and we, you know, settle on this, uh, subdivision. So I believe that's his intention.
Is, is there a, a decision on the surface of the common driveway?
Um, the, uh, we're proposing no changes to the existing driveway which will be utilized as a common driveway except for the entrance. Um, one of the, um, things that we talked about before is are we going to pave or are we not going to pave the common driveway entrance along Old Albany Post Road? We've decided that we will be paving that, uh, a proven proportion up to the property line up to Old Albany Post Road. That's the only change we're proposing to the driveway.
Seth, the, um, balance of the property that's going to be protected with the easement is going to be protected from development, but, um, what are the, what are the terms of, of access? Is it going to remain private property or?
So at, at this time, it, it, uh, it will remain, uh, private property. Um, the, uh, access, as I mentioned, will, if the easement for the common driveway will lead all the way up to the portion that, uh, is an old farm road and a stone wall line. So they will have access via this easement now. Um, an interesting part of this, if maybe Jim, if you can just see the location map on the top left a little bit, um, and, and why, uh, the, uh, land trust organization was interested in working with us is that the western, or sorry, the eastern portion of this property, uh, butts up against, actually just a little more to the, to the north direction, uh, this property, which is, uh, a conservation, uh, parcel. Um, so they were very interested in the potential of a connection along the, uh, eastern side, um, and, and hoping to engage what would be, you know, our, our eastern neighbor. Um, so potentially in the future, there may be access all the way through, um, you know, this parcel. But at this time, um, you know, they're just looking to acquire, um, and this will be a, a, a full lot. So they will own and take ownership of lot four.
And the fact that this current property is just across the street from Southland really creates a very interesting large opportunity to connect, you know, ecological areas.
Sure.
Other planning board members? Is there anyone here in the public who should need to comment on this application? Okay, so I think, um, I will ask for motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extensions. We have a couple of options here. Um, so I think Seth has adequately identified the things that are still outstanding, uh, including the MOU with Winnieke that we won't absolutely want recorded. Um, but we have the option to go ahead with conditional approval pending those, the receipt of the additional information. Or we can continue the public hearing, or we're not going to do a public hearing until we get that information. What, what do those want to do? That summarize it?
I don't want to get that, that's absolutely.
Don't know what else there is for us to learn. The only thing that would be outstanding is the MOU would win.
Well, the important issue with town highway.
Well, I think, I don't know that, I mean, I think coordination with town highway is important. I mean, I myself know the location that you're talking about. Like Mark knows, I know it's, you know, it's a problematic area, but I don't know that it necessarily has a major impact on this. I think that's between the town and the owners as opposed to really impacting the application before us.
Well, that's, that's something that we'd like to go with Bob, but I took an extensive look and so was Chuck Liskin that was here at the last meeting. All the drainage issues go to the south. In other words, just, just, uh, next to Liskin is Anthony Gasparini's property.
Yep.
That's a high point in the road.
Yep.
Gasparini, it goes to the north and then, uh, it goes to the north and south. And so I took a look at what, um, you know, the town highway department has done in the past and you can see where there, there have been some issues with water. It may go across the road. Um, so let's, you know, we certainly wanted, um, you know, we, we did say to Chuck that we would take a look at it, but, you know, I'd like to get Bob out there to see. But I, in no way does anything from that property, it drains, it drains it in opposite direction. As Seth mentioned before, um, cause he, he mentioned that bridge, uh, on the, uh, you know, where, where lots are, all our drainage, anything we do is, is to the east of that. Nothing, nothing goes towards Old Albany Post Road.
Well, I think, I think the intent of the conclusion of our discussion last month was that we would work with them to bring it to the attention of the highway department.
There, there we will.
And so I appreciate your continuing to work on. And so I appreciate your continuing to work on it. I think it's a good faith effort all the way up. Folks, are you okay with the conditional approval?
Yes.
Okay, Jim, you want to walk us through that, please?
I can do that. So this is, I think, our first conservation subdivision. We've had this divide for years being here, not quite a long time as ever. So it is essentially a two-step process we need to go through since we haven't gone through the four steps. And that is the first, we go through a secret resolution. And I'd like to walk through the short EAF part two, a quick overview, just to check the boxes there. Then we'll do the secret resolution, and then we can discuss the approval resolution. Let me bring it up. This is. So with our conservation subdivision, we actually, we need to walk through this part two assessment and essentially answer these questions the same way we would if we did the type one, the type one earlier, although this is a similar and quicker review. So the first question, essentially looking to see your opinion on whether there is no or small impact may occur, or there's a moderate or large impact may occur. First question, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the user intensity of the use of land?
It's not, it's just because of the additional houses.
Well, it's no or small.
It's no or small.
Right. So I think it's small.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause establishment in CBA? We don't have one, so that's a no. Will the proposed action result in adverse, an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walking?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation and renewable energy opportunities? It's a subject of doubt. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supply?
No.
Or wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water, bodies, groundwater, air quality, fluorine content? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will the action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? So I believe with that, unless anyone has another comment, if we state that we found a doubt or some impact may occur, we can report a secret resolution. I'll see if there's anything else to add.
I agree.
So the next step, I'll bring it up. Is the action secret resolution? This is for minor subdivision, conservation subdivision for David Alexanian, asking the board to consider proposed action seeking approval for the minor subdivision. David Alexanian is proposing to subdivide a 48.94 acre lot into four lots, one lot encompassing approximately 32.9 acres, amount of conservation easements to be held by the Winnekee Land Trust. Three remaining lots will be for residents, as one of which contains an existing residence. A total of two new lots will be created. Town of Ryman Beach Planning Board, its rules duly established, lead agency under secret and upon review and completion of the short EAF, we just did, and associated information, hereby issues a negative declaration or secret deeming environmental impact statement is not required, stating that such will not be prepared in its consideration of the conservation subdivision for the Alexanian property on Old Albany Post Road in Ryman Beach, New York, within the town's RC-5 zoning district. Thinking this action, the planning board approves the project to move forward. Proposed actions are hereby approved for implementation and destruction, and this is a status secret.
Correct. May I have a motion?
So move.
Motion Michael, second head of all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, exceptions?
Aye.
Thank you. One more.
They don't want us to be done.
So now we're asking the planning board to consider the draft approval resolution for the minor subdivision, conservation subdivision for David Alexanian. Again, minor subdivision for a lot at 110 Old Albany Post Road within the RC-5 zoning district, reaffirming prior qualifications unlisted under secret, for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. Based upon submitted information reviewed undertaking, finding the proposed work is consistent with the objective stated in chapter 101 subdivision of land, asking the board with respect to the subdivision to find that it is consistent with Town Code Chapter 101 and approve the application inclusive of the planned sheets prepared by Mike Krzyzewski, those the other application materials submitted, and adding the following conditions. One, and I will work on the reading of these, but section one, that the Winnekee MOU must sign, two, the coordination number signed up by the Town Highway Department, which can just be by email. And three, I think we just even mentioned the 50-foot buffer area that was mentioned is acceptable as proposed. And then authorizing the chair to stamp and sign, we've also had a site plan on the applicant's satisfaction of the three below conditions as well as the three I just added.
Very good. May I have a motion, please?
Who's that, my person? Are you opposing?
We close the public hearing. And so I'm asking for a motion, second one, I'll hold one.
So move.
So, hold one. Michael?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And I'll go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being on first day, thank you for your lovely presentation that summarized that process exceptionally well. So thanks for putting all the work in. Next up is Center Line Communications, AT&amp;T Utility Pole near 16 Charles Street, site plan and special use permit, big small cell on the two. Good evening. Lana? General, the question materials.
I received the number two files. Do you know which one you'd like? I'm sure you're original. The new ones are visuals and.
Sure. You can start with.
Here, I can read off the picture.
Do they rev two gray? Okay, so Kimberly Grebek, I'm here from Center Line Communications. We are an agent for AT&amp;T, and we're here based on our application for a small cell installation on the utility pole located near 16 Charles Street in Ryman Beach. We have submitted a BBT application and a site plan review application. In previous public hearings and previous meetings, there was some concern over the visual appearance of the installation. We recently met with the town attorneys to review what options we have. And in that discussion, the conclusion of that discussion was they wanted an additional set of CDs that represented removing the cover or the shroud that's over the equipment cabinet to possibly reduce the visual appearance of the additional equipment mounted to the pole. And they also wanted color options to better blend with the environment. So we went and seeked out from the manufacturing two different powder coating options for the equipment cabinets, which would be a gray or brown option to best represent or come close to the pole itself. So both options were provided in simulations. So we'll start here with the first simulation, which would be including the shroud or what we call the equipment covering. If you want to enlarge it, Jim, you can see we're talking about the box right there. Most small cell installations include kind of a covering for the equipment cabinet just to better protect it for the weather. That cabinet or covering covers both the radios and some of the equipment inside that can be removed, and we have removed it in other installations where the town felt that it was more important or better from a visual perspective to remove it. So that is a representation of the original application with the cover being included and the original coloring, which would be just blank stainless steel, unpainted stainless steel. You'll also note in the application that we are mounting it on the side of the pole that is facing non-residential housing. You've got housing on the other side, so the location of the pole is in the opposite direction. So if you want to go to then the simulation, and that shows the pole and then that'd be the pole in its current state without the equipment. And then obviously, the picture before was with the installation. So now we have two other simulations, if you want to go back to the original. And we'll open up rev three gray. So what we did here, just to show the comparison, is we show it now painted in the gray powder coating of the metal cabinet and with the shroud removing. So you have, instead of having the larger box around the two pieces of equipment, now you show the two smaller pieces directly underneath. You can enlarge that and see that's where your radio cabinet is. So again, that might be an option if the board prefers that particular look. Instead of having a cover, that would just be then the individual boxes underneath being exposed. Those are painted now to the manufacturer's powder coating specifications of gray, if we feel that that's a better match to the surrounding environment. So there's that picture. And then if you scroll down, there's the existing pole with no equipment mounted. We also provided a simulation in a brown color, which is also available, which would be rev three brown. Right above that one. And again, without the shroud, showing the color options. So there's basically two options in color and two applications for installation. You can have it with and without the shroud, and you can have it uncoated, painted gray or painted brown. So when actually, there's five different combinations there, with unpainted, painted gray, painted brown, and then with and without the shroud. Most of the towns have kept the shroud. We have had some other installations without, so either one's appropriate and acceptable to AT&amp;T as an option. And then the color is just personal preference of what you feel that would best represent the surrounding area and what would be better liked by the community.
Does anyone have any questions? I'd like to ask Seth and Jim. And I just, I think, one maybe a brief refresh of communication we've seen from our attorneys of one.
Yep.
Cover that, just so that we know what we are, if I'm not empowered to do this situation.
So everyone should have received a copy of the letter from Brent Lions regarding this application. It was dated Friday, November 4th. It is a public document and is available for review. I'll just summarize a couple of sentences that I can put together for the board, just to kind of go through the issues. What it means the board can and cannot do in its review, is that generally speaking, one of the first things to know is a municipality cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the deployment of telecommunications facilities in the community. This includes the deployment of small cell technology. It's been recognized as a matter of public policy that telecommunications facilities provide a benefit to our communities as a whole in a manner that is similar to utility providing, what has become an essential service. We did discuss RF emissions, we'll stick with those unless there are questions about that. We did cover that before. Where we have kind of been talking recently, mostly about aesthetics, and that's where we can discuss this, because it relates to Hamlet. And what Johnny Kim said is municipalities can consider potential aesthetic impacts of proposed small cell installation. Although municipalities are permitted to regulate aesthetics, provided the regulations do not have the practical effect of prohibiting the placement of those installations in the community. Regarding multiple carriers, the proposed small cell installation in this case is a single carrier facility.
Correct.
It is our understanding that some of the board members have asked whether the board can acquire that it be a multiple carrier facility or co-location facility, including and concluding and conducting, I'm sorry, our research. We encountered a helpful article, and then we're through the discussions about all of that. It said, thus, multiple carriers can be co-located on the same old structure that result in adverse aesthetic or visual impacts, impacts that significantly see the visual and aesthetic impacts of a single installation. And they gave us, I think, a copy of that article. In conclusion, what they said is that the planning board can look at the implementation of, and discussion of aesthetics within the district, although citing multiple carriers at single location appears to be possible as a technical matter, the board should bear in mind that requiring such co-locations could create adverse visual and aesthetic impacts that may significantly see the aesthetic and visual impacts of a single small cell installation. And regarding RF, as long as the proposed installation complies with SEC regulations, the planning board can act as a reminder of how concerns arising from or related to RF emissions. So that is the five or six sentence version of their letter in itself.
Anyone else, Jim?
No, not from me.
Do I have more members?
I do have a question. And my understanding is that one of the primary motivations for this is because of the need for a greater service availability because of all the commuters using the train station.
Yeah, it's considered an offload facility, so what you're providing is the increase of data and usage. It creates an offload of that data into another facility to handle the load.
So I was just wondering why it would be better or desirable, certainly aesthetically, I think, in the neighbors, but also desirable to have it located by the train station itself, which is a utility in way, the train, the rails, and all that sort of stuff. Couldn't be more aesthetically placed, but also why that would also work to try to accomplish the goal, if I understand the goal correctly.
The location is governed by the engineering of it. They provide an analysis of where the best location would be to service the entire need in that location. You're also trying to utilize existing structures. So from there, then, you're working with Central Hudson, which would be the partner utility company in identifying what poles or objects within that service area are the best location, similar to what we discussed in prior meetings. Not every utility pole or not every structure is available based on the load of maybe their own equipment, whether there be transformers or other equipment. So they actually sort of tell us what is available to be used. This pole was what was identified by Central Hudson as the location that would be available for use by AT&amp;T.
Thank you.
Okay, was that the sole location in the Hamlet of Brenton?
For the coverage needs of what this is doing, correct.
So they didn't, there were no other possible locations?
Correct. This is what was provided by Central Hudson. Correct.
It's to meet the needs, which is the carrier's perspective of having the biggest amount of impact, the least amount of estimate. Quick question, Jim, can you show the current pole and the new proposed pole? Actually, it's better if you do. And it's impossible trying to get those side by side, but the other pole with the equipment on it is towards the top of that tree. The paperwork says five feet is the difference in those poles. Doesn't seem like that in focus, is my point. And so I just, I'm not sure if that's really a true height change that's being proposed, number one. But then also, number two, is if the equipment on top of that is as tall as it is, it should be included in the height. And furthermore, that seems to be in the way of the house that's behind it as far as the view shed looking down towards the river. I'm raising that up. It's almost to the top of that tree in the other photos.
True. The first image. Either one, it would be the same on the top of the, and it's the same, I'll trade.
So what he's referring to here is, the pole is, the Central Hudson pole was already replaced. That pole was extended five feet. So in the simulation itself, you have the extension of the pole and the antenna on top of that pole.
So the left one says proposed conditions.
Correct.
But it's installed already.
The pole itself, not the equipment, obviously.
It's somewhat misleading to be reading it as proposed. That might lead one to believe that that was still to be implemented, but that is not the case.
Correct.
The pole has already been replaced to the height depicted in that picture.
Correct, yes. Central Hudson has already done their particular upgrade to that pole, which was in their work order. They control that equipment. We have nothing to do with that in regards to when they do their work.
And which is the antenna on top of the pole? Does the antenna on top?
That's the antenna. The antenna is located on the top. Your equipment's down here, so your antenna's on the top. If you scroll that down, your radios are right there, and then that is your separate metering. Because obviously, we need to pay for our own utility usage, so there's a small meter there that would control and provide billing essentially for the utility usage directly to AT&amp;T from Central Hudson.
So the antenna on top will belong to AT&amp;T?
Correct.
And it's not there now? It's proposed?
Correct.
It's not getting installed?
Correct, yes.
I was, I went by there, and I didn't see any power lines at that height. And it's just curious that they, on their own, installed a much bigger pole that doesn't support any of the utilities that they provide.
The pole replacement was part-
The one that's there now.
Right, the one that is there now is part of the agreement between AT&amp;T Works, obviously, all the carriers work with the utility companies. So that is part of a combined utility effort. So that replacement is part of an agreement that the utility companies have with the carriers. So whether they needed it or not, they will do the replacement. That's common across every state. The utility companies doing work to replace poles as needed by other utility companies.
And there's part of these poles, what, a grade of seventy-five feet or fifty feet along the road?
I'm not sure.
Okay, this one is quite a bit bigger than all of the poles that surround it, and it doesn't seem to have any power lines on it.
I'm not sure what they, what they, what equipment they have currently on that pole.
It seems to be the only one that's available in the entire Hamlet of Renton. Just seems to be a pretty perfect alignment.
They provide the location and the poles available. I provided some documentation from Central Hudson as part of that packet. I forwarded that gives some of their, then the attorneys have wanted some documentation from Central Hudson that shows how things are coordinated and what is available on the poles itself, which was provided. I don't know if you wanted to bring those documents up. I'm not as familiar with those. Those are Central Hudson documents, but I know that was something that the attorneys asked for, if we could provide and get from Central Hudson, which I forwarded what they provided to us. From the standpoint of what's existing, I don't know. We've identified what we know from our standpoint of what's existing on that pole. So if you want to just scroll back over to the existing conditions, there are some lines and some utilities to it. What Central Hudson uses the pole for, I'm not sure. So you do see some lines to it.
So I just want to clarify, AT&amp;T, Centerline Communications requested that a taller pole was put in?
Correct.
Okay, and why?
Just based on the requirements of the coverage. There's certain range based on the topography that you're trying to meet. No different than if you were building a new structure, you're identifying the height or the rad associated with that coverage. So it's just like a regular cell tower facility, is that they're all different heights based on the topography and needs for that particular area.
Right, and no residents unfortunately have an opportunity to comment on that prior to it being done.
No, they don't.
I'm just saying.
We have an authority.
No.
You know, I will, you know, try, I'm not trying to discourage conversation and questions, but I would remind us that we really are limited to talking about the aesthetics of the installation.
And use it, correct.
Well, the pole was there, the pole.
Correct. Antenna being at the top of it, is how much higher, and is within line of what house we're in?
But I think if you go back to, we spoke with John and Kim at length, and one of the things, Jim went over, and I won't remember exactly what it's like, even in our deliberation on aesthetics, that is limited to a reasonableness that does not prevent them from providing the services that, like, in their specific line of which to that, and I think there were specific points, that you would, we would have to weigh whether or not arguing about the height of the pole reduces the ability of the company to do what they want to do, if I, that particular assumption. Has to do with reasonableness, if you will.
Very hardy word.
I know, but it is, it is what was provided to us, and Kim was quite clear about going through the steps of providing reasonable responses.
Well, Jim, so do you offer different heights antennas? I'm assuming by the picture, if that's five feet, that it has another five to six feet, based upon the difference between those ones?
I can bring it up. We have, Jim, in the emails that were sent, I provided the CDs, that would be the best way to reference it. I'm not sure.
What now?
You can go to CDs Rev 3, the second document right there. And we can go to, does it give dimensions right there? No, but there's dimensions on the boxes, let's see, and it showed to the other factors on the page before. See if there's any dimensions on that. No, but I cert, I can provide, I'll look it up and provide it. You could, I could probably do it really quick on a scale at the bottom, but I could provide the specification sheet for the antennas itself, which provides the full spec.
That's thirty-six, the top is forty-two and a half, that's seven.
So it says proposed top of the pole, thirty-eight and a half. Excuse me.
Oh, right, we can do the count. So there we go, right there. So the top of the antenna versus the center line of the antenna versus the top. So thirty-eight and a half, thirty-nine, forty-four feet. Four feet, including the bracket. So the, obviously, the antenna itself is not, but from the top of the pole to the top of the antenna is four feet. So thank you for identifying, we can figure that out. The antenna itself is not obviously that entire four feet, because you have the mounting bracket underneath that. If, enlarge it one more time? You have the center line of the antenna at forty-one and three, so my guess is the antenna itself is three feet, because you have a foot, a foot, maybe two feet, because the center line of the antenna is forty-one, almost forty-one and a half versus forty-two. So the antenna itself is probably two feet.
I believe I found the melody, what Melody was referring to in the letter from Grant Lyons states, "According to the FCC, local requirements about the aesthetics of small cell installations are proper if they are one, reasonable, two, no more burdensome than those applied to other types of infrastructure deployment, and three, objective and published And then, defined reasonable. The assistance further states that local requirements regarding aesthetics are reasonable if they are technically feasible and reasonably directed to avoid or remedy the intangible public harm of unsightly or out-of-character deployment. At the same time, however, the cost of minimizing aesthetic impacts in accordance with local requirements is too costly. Those standards could be considered to be practically prohibitive and thus to make them.
Do you all understand that, right?
I don't think we have any jurisdiction over the site of this pole.
Or its existence.
I doubt that we have anything of its height.
Not reasonably?
I think that our authority is over the color of those attachments, and then whether they're going to be shrouded, which I didn't fully understand.
The way it was explained, which was, there is a case where it is shrouded, and all of those separate things are in one unit.
Oh, I see.
Some people feel that the encasement, if you will, is more detracting than having the things separated. So in those cases, it was done with, I think, a matter of aesthetics and taste. Do you like it all together, then covered up, or do you like it smaller on the side of the pole, and less protruding as a big block off the side? That's the only thing I can-
No, that's a perfect way to describe it. That's why we're offering it in both ways. We find that in most installations, people like to have it covered as a, kind of having everything hidden inside, but it does create a larger box on the outside, so if people are concerned about the size or the looks, it might, it's just an option.
So what it was down to deny is we have aesthetic options available to us.
Correct.
We need stainless steel for powder coating it, either in gray or brown.
Correct.
And then we have the options available to us in all three of those scenarios.
Correct.
With either completely guyin' everything in one box, or leaving them separate and closer to the pole.
Correct.
So with the concurrence of my planning board colleagues, maybe the time now is to allow the public to comment on these options, and then we can continue our discussion. Does that make sense to you?
Just one quick question. The meter box and the breaker box would not be able to be colored?
Correct.
What was the question?
The meter box and the breaker box would not be able to be the same color as the other.
Right, that's provided by Central Hudson, it's their standard equipment. So we only have control over kind of the cellular equipment, which would be the radio stuff on the top, so those are their boxes, although they're required for our installation, they're, you know, it's what Central Hudson provides. So more of a, when you have Central Hudson put a meter on your house, they're not matching that.
Match my house, does that make sense?
They're not asking to match the house, they'll install the meter accordingly, so. Correct, it's just those two boxes in the bill.
So if you don't shroud, then you have multiple boxes on the side of the pole.
Correct, two versus one larger one. So it's a matter of whether you want two smaller or one large? Larger.
Okay, I am going to go ahead and ask if there's anyone here from the public who wishes to comment and offer their opinions about the choices that we have to make.
My name is Richard Macaluso, I live at this property. I've lived here for seventeen years. I'm old and I'm retired, and I own the property. I respectfully disagree with the chairperson's interpretation of Mr. Lyons's opinion. I believe that the aesthetics consideration is not what color, and whether it matches the house, et cetera. I don't know if the four photographs I've sent in could be shown, because we don't see my house in these photographs. Are those? Jim, can you show them? While that's being set up, I have a question for Ms. Here, and I thank her for the accommodations that she did try to make, but for me, those are not, are not. We had the other meeting, the only other meeting, and I believe you stated at that meeting, that even though a new pole was put in recently, that they were going to put in another new pole. That's what you, I believe you stated several times at the only other meeting. Is that correct?
The pole was replaced by Central Hudson. It was a newer pole of like the ones, but the one that's there now is the one that's being utilized for this application.
Oh, I misunderstood. Okay, I thought they were going to still put in another pole, okay. And for the record, yes, that pole was put in approximately sixty days ago, and I believe, oh, it's much larger than that. And there are, there's nothing electrical on it, there's no cable on it, and Senator Jones asked a question whether this pole was to accommodate AT&amp;T and Centerline Communication, and I believe her answer was yes. But there was no approval of AT&amp;T and Centerline at that time. Central Hudson can put poles in wherever they want, but another question I have is, would you agree that Central Hudson has poles on every street in Renton?
Yes, but we-
Where there's houses.
Correct.
I also point out to the board, it's not only those streets, I think it's Grayell Street, goes down towards the Ryan Cliff Inn. There's a new restaurant down there. There's railroad parking lots that are endless, that go all the way down on the river, that are right next to the train station. There are so many locations with, this isn't here or nowhere. There's so many poles, and I'm not asking for this to be put in front of anyone else's house. I'm asking that it be put, even if this was put four feet that way, it would make a huge difference. That's where I live. That's where my neighbor lives, up above, and I point out that there was someone else here at one of the other meetings who objected that they were looking at it. If you please go to the next slide. That's the main street of Ryan Cliff, and that's where we would be looking at. That's a very important consideration of the entrance to a house. To look at that versus to look at this. Even the size of that pole, but we can do nothing about that. I'm not objecting to anything that's due to the FCC. I'm just saying that perhaps AT&amp;T can, they should win with the town. They should, they should win with people. That's, that's, it doesn't have to be win or lose. It doesn't have to be that way. It'd just be, all right, we'll withdraw the application, and we'll look to put it somewhere else. I haven't heard that. I've heard that the engineers said, well, the engineers didn't consider what I'm talking about. At the last meeting, I brought up the article in Architectural Digest, which listed the fifty-five most beautiful towns in America. Two of them are in New York. Number fifty-four is Old Spring. Number fourteen is Rhinebeck, New York. The little quip is about thirty words. Fifteen of the words are, "It's along the Hudson River and Freud's views of the Catsfield Mountains." Can we go to the next picture, please? That's, and the next one will have a little, that's the Hudson River, and a little bit more in the next photograph, you'll see the Catsfield Mountains. That's the Catsfield Mountains. But that's, and that picture is out of my bedroom window. It's just unnecessary, isn't it?
But I think, I guess what we're confusing is that, like, our equipment is behind the trees at the bottom for the equipment. You have the antenna up there, and the pole itself was there.
Cell towers. That's, I'm sorry, I'm an ex-hippie, I don't know what it is about this, but it's not the FCC, it's not. I'm an attorney, I'm just trying to be retired and live in the world without plastic and other non-aesthetic things. and other non-aesthetic things. I reside there, we run the tops by life and I, a lot of people don't, they think it's a joke, but we do, and, and we don't want to look at this, and I think it negatively impacts Ryancliffe. Ryancliffe, our library, our, our hamlet is this way. On December tenth, we're going to have a candlelight wall. It's not for everybody, but it's for us, and this is not for us. I did not go to one neighbor, I did not go to anyone to solicit or drove of people to come here. I, I just want this to be peaceful, they can go elsewhere, that's, that's my whole point. It's, it's not so much, well, AT&amp;T won't have this, of course they have. They just have to do a little bit of work and maybe, they're, they're redoing the train station right now, there's trailers down there. They're redoing the train station. Can't be attached to the, maybe not the train station because Central Hudson doesn't have any history there, I, all right.
I, I don't know, also saying...
Well, you don't know, but you want, you want...
This, this argument seems to be more about the Central Hudson pole, which has nothing to do with us, the pole was there, was there before.
Was put up?
No, but the pole was there.
No, no, that pole was not there, there was another pole.
Correct, that was five feet shorter, correct?
It was shorter, yes, about five feet. Anyway, I, I do, I thank him and, uh, thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else?
A question.
Uh, please come up and ask a question.
My question is, um, if you get approval, if you approve this, this evening, is that it? Is that, is that it? Does that mean you can go ahead and do it?
Yes.
Or are there any other boards you have to go in front of?
No, this would be it.
So, the only way that we could do it further is to go to the governor or, I mean, what do we do? Um, I, I, maybe you can't give us advice in that respect, but, um, you know, you, you put us and lots of people through so much to preserve, um, Ryancliffe, and we actually appreciate your efforts, even though they were troubling to us, but here is something that you can't do anything about. Can you advise us on how we might do something about it? I mean, I am going to go and shop. It's necessary, I'm telling you, because this is obviously outrageous, that, that a utility should be able to do something which is so, um, you know, anti the needs of the people.
I think, I think we understand your concerns.
I know we do.
And that we, and I'm not speaking for anybody saying whether we share or don't share your concerns, I, I think we've tried to walk through this with our attorneys to find out the limits of our ability to...
Yeah, I understand.
...make decisions. Um, I think I'm correct in stating, and I, I don't know, that, you know, were we, were they not to be able to go ahead, um, and were they to look for another location that has no impact or bearing on the Central Hudson pole that's there?
Right.
In my understanding of this, the pole, the pole would remain, um, and it doesn't necessarily please everybody, but the pole would still be there. If, if they were willing to go look for other locations, it doesn't change the fact...
The pole is fine, I have no problem with the pole.
The problem then is that, that AT&amp;T is there? I'm, I'm trying to understand.
It's the aesthetics of a cell tower and looking at all these electrical boxes, I have that problem, not everyone else's.
I think we probably... Well, folks, you know, the only thing that seems, I, I believe you were asked in the past, correct me, I don't remember, it's hard to imagine trying to remember anything. I believe the question of working with Amtrak was raised before, and that you indicated that they were not willing to discuss it and had not responded to any sort of...
Yes, it's, it's, when you're dealing with, it, it, obviously, the, the concept of creating tower, towers and structure, and structuring...
Wait, let me just back up. Can you tell me whether or not your company made an approach to Amtrak to ask if there was an opportunity to do anything?
It's not an option.
Is it not an option because they said no, or it's not an option to ask them?
It's, it's not an option because the, the railroad itself is an organization, does not or will not, or does not have a relationship with the utility companies to share infrastructure like that.
And is that, is that in binding, or is that anecdotal?
It's at a level way above me, and, and I apologize for, for not having that information, but it's just, you veteran of the industry, it's a huge company.
And the person we need to speak to is Shuma, who got...
Well, the, the only thing that it seems, you know, there, a question has been raised by several people about whether an alternative location is available, and many people have raised the question about Amtrak and the work that's going on there and the upgrading to the building, and all of this is underway. Um, I don't know that, I don't know how others feel about trying to close that door in some way, but we don't have anything in the written record that says that this has been explored and can be continued.
The best I can explain it to everybody is that, and I know we, you said the engineers, but the, the networks are governed by the RF, which is the radio frequencies, engineers that have to do the analysis as to what area or what location is going to provide the coverage or the, the...
Okay, so, so has, have engineers been asked?
Correct, this, this was the location that was identified as being the location needed to properly solve the problem that the network has. So, it's not a matter of, there is no other options available, this was what was selected and worked with Central Hudson, because obviously we have to have a structure that already exists, we can't create a new one.
It's a destination for AT&amp;T.
Correct, for AT&amp;T's coverage, Horizon, like I said, might be different because their towers and locations are different.
It's a destination for AT&amp;T.
Well, and also for AT&amp;T customers, presumably, the whole idea is to increase the coverage so that they can use the service.
Yeah, well, I am...
I happen to be an AT&amp;T customer, so, so I am concerned also that it isn't all of the utilities there, um, but I think it's, yeah, it's a real problem here, this is not a problem. My, my question to you was, to whom do we go? Because of, when you completed your findings, and I think the person to go to is a politician that is, thank you.
All right, um, anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, I just have one last comment, is the precedent that might be set for Ryancliffe and Rhinebeck, are there carriers? You might think this is not intrusive, but what's to say, it goes from one to five to ten to spectrum, Horizon, I don't know what else, and then the upgrading of this becomes another problem, and it goes to 5G, I think that was mentioned at the first meeting, and yes, well, thank you.
We, we did, we did ask about going to 5G, and the answer that we received was that there would be no changes in the pole at all if they went to 5G, that that was a, solved as a software solution, and that would not physically change the appearance. So, we did try...
Yes, we did, I recall that.
Yeah.
And I did get that information correct. I did get confirmation from the AT&amp;T attorneys that, um, when the, the system needs to be converted to 5G, it's simply just a software change. There is no quick change that would be needed to accomplish that task.
And we did ask the attorneys to, uh, look at the question of co-location, and they did provide, um, some images of poles that, uh, have other co-locations, and in some cases, these arms go off in every direction and begin to look like a big tree and are visually more intrusive, um, so the concept of co-location doesn't appear to be, you know, the magic pole. Um, if there are no other public comments, I would ask for comments and, um, suggestions as to the direction we would, we would play in.
Well, I'm a little bit confused because you had said that, um, the only concern that, that we're limited to are aesthetic, and it says that, um, the criteria have to be, um, clear and, and, um, publicly previously published. I don't think there's anything about color in our guidelines, is, is there? But there is, there, there are statements about compatibility with surrounding architecture and, um, uh, design and style are issues that are relevant, and I think just painting it brown is not going to address those. So, I think we need to look more carefully at what the thing looks like in order to make an assessment of the, um, aesthetic compatibility, and from what I've seen, I, I don't think it's compatible aesthetically with the surrounding environment of Ryancliffe.
Are you talking about the pole?
I'm talking about the, just that piece of equipment. I mean, we've resolved the thing with the pole, but the fact that the equipment is elevated to such a high level and it's, um, it's a cylinder.
So, in order to answer that question, what would you want to be provided for?
I would like it to be located at a different location within the hamlet of Ryancliffe. I don't, I don't buy it that this is the only location in the entire hamlet of Ryancliffe. And also, I don't, I don't know how many, um, AT&amp;T customers are going to be within this offload area that hasn't been presented, and I, I haven't seen anyone at a public hearing express any concern for needing better AT&amp;T service in the hamlet of Ryancliffe.
I think that that's, we did our...
No, I have, I agree. Again, we just take the aesthetics discussion, I mean, customers are not in things like, you know, how much money the pole makes or things like that, outside of...
The pole, certainly, the existence and location of the pole, as I understand it, is not within our jurisdiction. The fixing of certain equipment is not within our jurisdiction other than to talk about color and whether or not we want multiple boxes or one larger box. Am I correct?
That, um, certainly is the way it's been presented to us, uh, the conversations with our attorneys, and, um, I think if they were here tonight, they would reconfirm that, but I don't think I'm speaking on a tour by that journey.
I, I, I would say take on that.
Is it within our jurisdiction to request that other sites are assessed? I'm just throwing it out there.
What's the other sites for?
Other sites for this to...
Other sites for the antenna?
The antenna.
Because the only thing where...
The antenna and the other five boxes around the pole are not currently there, that's a part of the antenna and the installation of this, um, is, is, is there an opportunity for a request to Centelline, AT&amp;T, to assess or offer potential other sites, uh, just that don't impact the view shed, um, as shown, um...
I, I think you can, I, I think, Jim, it's not me willing to go off the rails, I, I think you could certainly ask Centelline to provide documentation that they have looked at alternative locations, they have spoken to other people, and that they are upvowing that this is the only location. Once they do that, then I think, then you get into the, the questions of reasonability, and if, and we don't have the ability to, um, prevent them from conducting their business according to the FCC, so...
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, uh, this is, this is really the front door to the entire town of Ryancliffe. This is, uh, for over a hundred and fifty years, people have arrived by train, and even the people who come here as tourists, that's the first thing that they see, is they're going to drive up that hill, and this is one of the things that they're going to look at, and this is one of our designated scenic roads. So, I think the appearance of, of a modern utility is quite relevant, and it's something that I find objectionable, this is not the hill I expected to die on, but the fact of the matter is, I, I think, I think it's quite important for us to review it and take it seriously, and I'm, I'm not convinced that this is appropriate.
Just to put it back out there, the reference is, we're only reviewing this because it's in the hamlet, and the only thing we're reviewing in the hamlet is the aesthetics. If this were in any other part of the town, we wouldn't have every, any planning involved. To dispose of the building, not on a...
Correct, and, which, which leads to future...
The other ones, the other ones, where we provided the list of the other ones that were already completed.
Right, so, I mean, I, I believe that many people sitting at this table and in the audience share the same passion for the long-term implications of this popping up everywhere. That battle has to be the battle, I don't mean battle in that way, but that conversation needs to go from this planning board to the town board and others who have the power to change the zoning law and change other things to, to adequately protect the town. This is not, in my opinion, something that we can do at this table, certainly not with this act, we can, we can take another step, we can ask them to provide written documentation, but when we get that, we still don't think we can go as far as, as many of us might want it.
I mean, I think, general, what, I mean, from, from the, this side of the table, we approach it as trying to utilize existing structures to avoid additional infrastructure towers to rebuild, which service, which serves benefit to, to both parties.
I, I don't think, I don't think that we, I, I'm not personally criticizing you, your company, you're trying to do what they're trying to do, and I get that.
Right.
But the other side of it, which is being reflected here, is we have to think more broadly about the community and the questions that are being raised, and, you know, we're trying to walk a very fine line here between what our attorneys are telling us we can legally do and how far we can go. And I, I, I understand the business model, I understand how easy it is to work with Central Hudson and get it, um, but it is, you know, you do kind of look around and wonder why with all this going down at the train station, why can't these conversations take place? It is frustrating for us to not...
I, I mean, I certainly do understand the question, I just know, I just are, you know what the answer is, I mean, it's done it.
And you know what, just because you say you know it, doesn't mean we know it because we don't have it in writing. So, a rejection would, you know, a written rejection that would say, you may be ever might help, but you, but, you know, just saying you know the answer, well, it's like, yeah, I know, I know, I ask for a lot of things and I know what the answer's going to be.
And I, and I do know from an equipment standpoint, we, you know, I know they, they try to go beyond to make it neat and it's small and is...
Well, it's not small, so, you can try and make it small.
But if you look at the, you know, a lot of the utility...
I'd like to bring it back, I'd like to bring it back to us, and I appreciate the advocacy that you've provided through the company. Um, I, folks, I just...
Just without, without, without staring at me, but, um, I would advocate that for the people in this room, that we request something in writing that this is the only location, and, and if it comes back that that's it, I mean, our hands are tied, but I think for this community, I think we owe it, and I think that is not crossing the line, I think it's us doing our duty to us.
And I know that question was asked when they, when the attorneys from both sides were talking, I just don't know how that information is communicated or presented, not whether if it's been written or not.
Sean is making a suggestion, remember in the planning board, I'd like your reaction to this suggestion.
It's a good suggestion. We normally, which are any other issue, and we were concerned about something being done at a certain place, we would ask how alternatives to be looked at. Oh, if they have not been looked at, they should be looked at before the report, but they have been, then this was chosen, which is, why are the elements not chosen, why did this one, um, the top of it?
Others? I think Craig would go along with that. Jim, and then your side. I know. Jim, do you see any downside to taking that step?
First of all, like I said, I'm not an attorney, I just, no, I, I think it's, it's a legitimate request, um, based on everything I know about grant law, as I said, and I think that, in my opinion, is probably the last piece of information. If it's been submitted, then it's in there, we'll find it, but obviously the board's not aware of that specific statement, so I think we need to go back through the submission packet, it's not there, it's provided in writing, and then at that point, kind of decide how you want to proceed.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, so, yeah, definitely made it or just say slow motion.
So, yeah, definitely made it or just say it's on motion.
Well, I mean, I just want us all to maybe repeat what you...
Yeah, I think, I think we make the motion that we give just confirmation that this is the only site available, not the only site that benefits. I guess it's, there needs to be something in writing saying this is the only site available with this, this equipment, something...
Or this is the option.
This is, yeah, something that can communicate it. And I feel like this is the last, I feel like that's, could potentially be what's due to the community and due to us as a board. And from there, we can go off camera.
I don't know that we need a motion in a second. I think we just need to agree that at this point, we're going to continue the public hearing with the, with a reasonable request to AT&amp;T to provide us with something documenting that alternative sites have been looked at and then that this is, this is the preferred site and then reasons why it's the preferred site. And I think if we have that, then...
I, I don't, I think the use of the term preferred is a little bit misleading. We need to know that this is the, the only option of all the options in the town of Reincliffe, and this is the only one. Because everything else is prohibited because the, the counter argument would be, if you don't approve this site, then you're prohibiting me from putting this in anywhere. We need to know that that's the truth, that there's nothing else that might be an alternative to this exact location. So the preferred site, I mean, we all have preferences, but sometimes you have to make...
Point well taken.
You have to make concessions.
Can you guys just clarify? If, if we go and then have, let's say, Central Hudson provides some sort of statement that this was the pole that was available for our use, let's just say there's another one, doesn't the argument still continue as we move to the other, another pole of that?
Not necessarily. I mean, as I said, this is a, this is a scenic road and this is the, this is the main entrance to the town of Reincliffe from when people arrive from the train. I mean, it's a very prominent location and a very important and aesthetically significant.
There is another element here also. This has to be consistent with our LWRP.
Consistent with our...
Yes, be consistent with our LWRP. And that applies to any state, federal, county, local, the MTA, RLO, those different agencies, anything they propose to do within our local waterfront revitalization area has to be consistent with our local water revitalization plan. So to some extent, we are required to ask these questions.
Thank you.
If another location were found, you could end up with the second pole with this pole remaining because it's a Central Hudson pole.
Correct.
So I'm not sure what's to be gained. I'm willing to go along with this.
But that is for the equipment. The equipment is the equipment. Whether it's going to be on that pole or another pole, it's, the, the equipment doesn't change.
Oh, we understand that. And I...
Excuse me, then that pole should not have been put in 60, 60 days. They shouldn't have waited to get the...
That is a central, I mean, that's a Central Hudson issue, and that's unfortunately not under our control.
But it was raised as an argument of why this equipment should be put on this pole. And I don't think that's a legitimate argument.
I think what's left for us to do is to follow the course of action that Sean has recommended. We are, I hope you understand, we are trying to, to the best of our ability, get as much information as we can. At a certain point, we will be at the point where we can go no further. And I think most of us at the table are happy to take this next step and apologize. And we understand that you personally have been looking closely with our attorneys and others to provide information, and I'm not faulting you for that. But it is, you know, it is an issue that obviously has raised a number of concerns. And I think we owe it, as Sean says, to the water community and the folks impacting the ODLR to ask for this last piece of information. So if you want to speak directly with Jim after about exactly what we're looking for, I would encourage you to do that.
Perfect. I will definitely. And I just want to make sure that I can confirm what exactly you're looking for, whether it be a statement from Central Hudson.
Well, since we're looking at it aesthetically, I think one of the things we're trying to answer is that the, that is there not another location that is less aesthetically intrusive? I mean, that's, I think, where we're going, you know? Because we're only commenting on the aesthetics. So the question isn't, is it gray or brown? It's like, is, is this the only location that, or are there other locations that are less impactful from an aesthetic perspective and have less... So it's not just the aesthetic of the pole itself, it's the overall aesthetic of the community and the environment and, and what it looks like as part of an area where people live. So I think that's what we're trying to get. If it turns out that the only other poles that are available and reasonable for the installation are equally, are in other locations in Reincliffe that are equally intrusive, then we'll know that. But at this point, you don't definitively know it, in my opinion. So are we, can we respond?
Yeah.
Okay. So could I have a motion to continue public hearing? Motion from Evan, second from Michael Allsman.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's good.
Yeah, what's the date?
We have a change of course.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your commitment to the community and we appreciate your patience with this as well. It's ready there. Thank you. So we are at now the point in meeting where we would be taking up public hearing before Rockledge, 492 After Hook Road, under an insight plan approval, special news permit, wetland permit. I indicated at the beginning of the meeting and a little bit later that Rockledge has asked for continuation.
That's correct.
To Denver.
Yes, please.
Denver. And Evan is recusing herself, as she has in the past. So since they will not be making the consultation, we will simply open it for comments from the public at this point. And I will repeat, because some of you came later, when I presented this at the game, I indicated that the reason for continuation is because our engineering consultant has not had sufficient time to review the materials that was submitted by Rockledge. So this is not a request for Rockledge to be given additional time to develop something that's so good to receive feedback. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And we did have some forewarning that that would be the circumstances evening, but we like to be present. So to that end, I just wanted to ask if, so, so is it because of the circumstances for this continuation, my request may be more or less appropriate? But I was going to ask if it might be possible to continue until the February date so that we're not back here on January 4th, having spent another holiday preparing for, you know, for a Rockledge meeting? We might ask that. But if you all are sure that you just need to read, or whoever needs to read the stuff to be prepared for the next thing, and that's the only thing that needs to happen between now and then, then I understand why.
Well, it's not a matter of us reviewing the material, it's been forwarded to our engineering consultant.
Right.
And so I can't, I certainly can't speak for Christian and get any sense of how long it would take him to review it.
Okay.
Have you had conversations with him over the night and this?
No, I have not.
Okay. You have it, Jim, have you?
Not to the extent that I can say when it's going to be done. I know they're working on it, and he's got a team of people working on it, but no one can talk about that.
We do know that because of, we're very pleased that the engineering consultants we use have experts in all the various aspects of this application. And so I know it has been, you people have been brought in in addition to Christian to the team that will be reviewing it, which I find reassuring because it means we're getting the highest level of expertise in the company that we can get. So personally, I'd like to continue it at the date in January, and we will get in touch with Christian and see if we can do that from now a timeline.
You that if they're not going to be regulated by then, that we then change the date to February?
We can't do that. I mean, we're going to set the next date tonight. I'm sorry. It's, we're, they requested the date to January, if they want to change to February, that's fine, but we're responding to their request to continue it to January. Does anyone wish to delay it?
See in January. So in the, in the interest, in the interest of keeping things on track then to, one of the, one of the things that seems, two of the things that we are interested in is, is where this, the status of their application to the DEC that requires the impact, or actually, maybe I'm conflating two things, but anyway, somewhere there's a need for a, for a report on the impact of the output from the wastewater treatment plant on the receiving waters. We don't believe we've seen that in the materials. So that may still be outstanding. And the environmental report, except for the wetland boundaries, seems to be dated 2014. So we were curious, I think that there are some limitations on the age of reports that are suitable for an application. So just so we don't wait a month or two to raise that, just wanted to leave that in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, David Minor, 306 After Hook Road. I would just like to reaffirm what my neighbor said. I believe that, I'm sorry, I thought somebody else would speak to this issue and a person wish he could come up for her at the last minute, so I'm not, didn't research this as thoroughly as I might. But Kara was referring to the matter that I believe back in 2017, the engineer requested that the processed water that's going into the stream from the sewage plant, the analysis of that would not be complete until there was a report, an engineering report on the effect on the receiving waters and that it was submitted to the DEC. This is one of the two, one of the two or three critical issues that concerns the entire community, not just the neighbors. So we're almost 500 people who are concerned about this project, which you all know from the material that was submitted to you. And we'd like to know if that's been, so it would really be important for us to know where that report is, where we would find it, how do we get a hold of it, how do we find out if, if it's, when it's coming, or whether it's already been submitted somewhere? So I just find this is a really important issue to... Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a request to continue the public hearing until the January, excuse me, Gretchen, I forgot your name.
January 4th.
January 14th. Jim, do you want to have a couple of questions? What do you think?
I can summarize.
All right.
So just, I wanted to summarize, since you do have a public hearing tonight, just kind of the process moving forward. I talked with Grant Lines again about this because this project is now only before the planning board, but it's also before the CBA. There have been some questions, I think, by the public getting out, kind of how we're going to move forward with this. The details are in my notes, you know, public document, I won't read the whole thing, it's about a page long. But essentially, what needs to happen at this point is...
It starts on 18.
Essentially, what's happening at this point is, this is a type one seeker application, so it requires a thorough environmental review to take place. Because it's a type one seeker application, the zoning board of appeals has deferred their seeker determination to the planning board, which is what they're typically doing for, I think, all their applications. But with the type two, it's easy to move forward, it doesn't require coordinated review, and those are deemed to be a type two action. The type one action requires detailed reviews. So in talking with John and Kim, who represent both the planning board and the CBA, and as the planning board and CBA attorneys, I did confirm the process moving forward as follows. Essentially, all materials need to be submitted to the planning board for review, acknowledged by the applicant to be final, and then available for review and approved by our, the planning board, I'm sorry, consulting engineer, which essentially is kind of what's happening right now. So we need to get his comments back. When we get the town engineer's comments back, we will have to see if there are any outstanding issues or concerns that need to be addressed, and we'll work through those. Once the plans have been essentially signed off on by the town engineer stating that he's comfortable with what's there, he has no major outstanding issues, and is comfortable with the planning board moving forward, we then can, will continue the process as follows. The planning board will go through and undertake the seeker review process to discuss and complete the part two and part three forms for a type one action. If no significant environmental issues are found, they'll be asked to pass a seeker approval resolution. If there are significant issues identified or positive declaration is found, then the review process, the seeker process will continue in more detail. When we get through the part two and part three forms, the CBA will then conduct their review of the request for the variance that's been submitted. They will go through their process, and once they are done with their review of variance application, they will then come back to the planning board for their review of a final approval or rejection letter at that point. So it's a little different than what we've typically done in the past with most of our reviews because the CBA is involved in these type one actions, a little more complicated, and a little back and forth. But that's generally the process moving forward. Do you know if I have any questions?
Just a real quick, because I know there are other agencies, contributing agencies to this process, like the CAB and stuff like that. I haven't seen reports from them.
I believe we've received reports from the CAB and HAB in the past, but it would have been some time ago. But they have commented on the project, as I recall.
It was a while.
It was a while.
Okay, I asked them the recent comments, maybe you heard them go.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll check the record. And obviously, we have still some steps to take. So if it seems prudent to ask them to either reconfirm or add on to their comments, I think there's ample time to do that.
I'd just like to say, and I've made this complaint before, that continuing this meeting to the day after a holiday weekend may be technically okay, but it is absolutely, absolutely not supportive of public comment to try to, we have a rather extensive mailing list. People have great difficulty getting here, and they don't know how long they're going to be here because it's scheduled at a specific time. And I really appreciate you avoiding scheduling this right after a holiday weekend, which you've done before. It just makes it extremely difficult to inform people about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are we, do we have a motion in a second? Do we, no, no, may I have a motion in a second? I mean, I'm sympathetic, but I don't know how to begin to parcel out which ones rise to the level of, you know, and I would also ask you to be patient with us because we have to be here right after the holiday, and we don't know how, but we're going to get out. So we're making kind of a level of commitment on our own, and I hope you appreciate the fact that, you know, we now meet twice a month, and we have long meetings, and we have to prepare for them as well. I would just say, I don't, don't mean this defensively, but every time we have a meeting, we get 30 or 40 pages of meeting notes from Jim. So everybody sitting at this table is going to have the same, the same task before them in terms of reviewing not just your application, but every other application that comes before us at a meeting. And there's a lot to get through.
Except the public doesn't have access to that information.
Well, you know, we were doing, we didn't get the request for the continuation until today, so we can only act as quickly as we can act in terms of what comes to us.
And that's not something that's typically shared with anybody.
Well, the...
You can do it ahead of time. I mean, I do try to get it out to you guys and let you guys know. But that's not something that typically gets sent to anybody. It's just requested and then it's done at the meeting. That's, and it's all a track system.
You have been incredibly helpful to us. We definitely appreciate that.
I do, I do, I do, we have been at this for about five years now. So... So I completely respect the effort that you all put into, to your efforts here. This has been like hanging over our heads for five years, since we're in our, yeah, but you're not, well, not all, one of you lives near it, but, but yes, I mean, it's like, it's in our backyard, and it's, and it's for us to defend ourselves too. So it's, so it's just, it's very stressful.
I understand.
So I think that was, that, that, we really appreciate what you're doing. But that's how we...
I also think that this event, I think the other disadvantages is from moving it from a Monday to a Wednesday, there are people that are not able to commit to coming on, you know, Monday nights, one thing, but we have commitments on Wednesday nights. So that makes it difficult. I went to a board meeting that night.
Come, motion, please.
So, Sean.
The motion would be to continue it to the January meeting.
January 4th.
January 4th. But it's motion, in a second. All those in favor? Close, stand your [inaudible]. Thank you. I think that concludes the business of the evening. So I would entertain a motion to, thank you, Mike.
Second, Sean.
All those in favor? Close, stand your [inaudible].